Hello and thank you for tuning in to CITR 101.9 FM. You're listening to Democracy Watch, the News Collective's weekly news report, bringing you alternative and undercover current affairs from Vancouver in the lower mainland. My name is Alex DeBoer.
I'm Zoe Power.
And I'm Lyndon Wong.
It is Thursday, the 25th of October at 5:02 PM. We're broadcasting from UBC's Vancouver campus on the ancestral, traditional and unceded territories of the Hunkamunam speaking Musqueam people. It is five days since the municipal election and here at Democracy Watch, we are still recovering from the very intense excitement of staying up late on Saturday night to see the polling results come in. And it was a late night. There was only 984 votes difference between the first and second candidate. So we were biting our nails anxiously watching every single poll come in. It was after 12:30 when we finally knew the outcome. Very exciting stuff.
That's so true.
Yep. So after 10 years of a vision-led and dominated city council, Saturday's results signaled a drastic change. Kennedy Stewart, who ran for independent campaign for mayor after stepping down as federal MP for the MPA in Burnaby in an extremely close election, beat out MP's candidate Ken Sim and fellow independent Shawna Sylvester to become the next mayor of the city of Vancouver. Well, so congratulations Vancouver, you have a new mayor. And Kennedy will lead a council that is fairly evenly split between conservative and more progressive members, with the MPA holding five out of 10 seats and the others split between the Greens, One City, and COPE's high-profile activist candidate Jean Swanson.
Ooh, Jean.
Yeah, exciting stuff. So there's a few much general trends that come out of the election as well. And in today's show, we are going to be bringing you all of the hot election takes that you've been waiting for from all of the most informed municipal politics pundits in all of Vancouver, BC. So we will be hearing from political scientist Jack Lucas, who is Democracy Watch's resident font of wisdom for political analysis, as well as from Frances Bueller, a former City Hall reporter and adjunct professor at the UBC's School of Journalism. The first person we're going to hear from today is Jack. So he'll be guiding us through his thoughts about the role of new election initiatives like the randomized ballot paper, as well as whether 2018 really did turn out to be the year of the independent as everybody predicted. So we're going to play you an interview with Jack Lucas, political scientist from the University of Calgary, Alberta, something like that. This interview is conducted by local podcast celebrity Alex DeBoer.
Ha ha. Here we go. Yeah, I wanted to ask you about your thoughts on how this election, this 2018 municipal election, was supposed to be the year of the independent. And although Kennedy Stewart obviously was elected mayor and he is an independent, not a single independent candidate was elected to council, school board or parks board. So do you have any thoughts on why that might be?
Sure. So I think the important thing to recognize from these results is how valuable party labels are for voters. And you know, Vancouver has had a party system more or less since 1936. And it has become pretty well-established in the, in the local political environment. And people really use those party labels to make their vote choice. So I think it's, if you look at the mayoral race, now, first of all, Kennedy Stewart is an independent, really in name only. Everybody sort of understands what his party affiliation is at the, at the federal level at least, and can incorporate that into their, into their vote decision. But in any case, the mayoral race receives so much attention, it's possible to get information about the mayoral candidates fairly easily. And that's just not true in these other races. And so in the other races, it just makes sense that voters are saying, look, I tend to support MPA, I'm just going to vote for the MPA candidates, or Green, or COPE, or what have you.
Yeah. And then in terms of the randomized ballot, which you've written about, and you've studied Vancouver's election results from, I believe, 1936, is that correct, onwards?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, you have access to that information. So you've studied how the alphabetic ordering of ballots has affected Vancouver elections. And then in this particular election, council voted to randomize the ballot. And your argument through the research you did was essentially that in a system where there are parties, an alphabetized ballot doesn't really have an effect. So I was wondering, in this election, since we had parties, but we also had independents who were not affiliated with parties, do you have any sense of what kind of effect our newly randomized ballot had on the election overall?
Yeah, you know, I've been trying to dig into this a little bit in the last couple of days. And the first thing to say is that it's pretty tricky and we don't really have enough data yet to make any firm judgments about the effect of this randomized ballot. There's only so much you can really say about one election. And even if we combine 2018 with 1993, when there was also randomized ballot, it's still just two cases out of a lot of elections. And so it's a little hard to know quite what to make of it. But with that caveat in mind, I think I would say two things about the randomized ballot and its effects. The first is that, speaking generally, there's not any overwhelming evidence that being at the top of the ballot was a kind of huge advantage for people. And this is in keeping with what we found in the past. Since the 1970s, the ballot order hasn't appeared to matter all that much because you have this robust party system. And so people have that shortcut right there on the ballot for them. If they want to vote for a particular party like Vision Vancouver, they can just skim their hand down the ballot and vote for the Vision Vancouver candidates. And so it's not really that much work to go down through the entire ballot to do that. So that's the, that's the kind of big picture story. But the other side of it is that, to the extent that we find any effects here at all, it would appear that the randomized ballot made the situation worse rather than better in terms of the advantage to those who are at the top of the ballot, or the advantage to party candidates who are ahead of the others in the, in the ballot order. So if you look at the MPA candidates for city council, and you look at those results, what you see is this pattern of declining votes as you go down the ballot. That could be a fluke. It's, it's a little hard to know. But it is in keeping with this broader pattern that what we do see is that people in the top quartile of the ballot order in 93 and 2018, when the randomized ballot was in place, do seem to be more likely to be elected than people who are in the top quartile under the alphabetized ballot. So I would say, in general, probably not an overwhelming change here. The big picture story about the importance of political parties, I think, continues to hold. But then, in addition to that, I would certainly not say that the, the situation has gotten better. And if anything, a big complicated random ballot with more than 70 names on it is really difficult for people to get through and find the specific individuals they want to vote for. That was part of the reason it was eliminated in 1993. And, and there's some evidence that that same problem was, was occurring this year as well.
But then, is that an issue with the ballot simply being too long with too many candidates? Or is that about it being randomized or alphabetized?
Well, a long ballot is difficult no matter what, but it's sure a lot easier to find, you know, Joe Smith, if you know that the ballot is alphabetical, than to find Joe Smith randomly assigned on a list of 70, whatever candidates. What was it, 71?
Yes, 71.
In the end. And so it, it's, it's certainly, there's a bigger story about the fact that in an at-large election, you're going to have a lot of candidates on those council ballots. But when you jumble all the names up randomly, it makes it that much harder to find a specific name on the list.
Right. And like you said, it has been noticed that with parties, the further down the list, they would receive slightly less votes, generally speaking. And there were a couple of cases, like I know with One City, Christine Boyle, there were two council candidates running with One City. Christine Boyle was very high on the list and Brandon Yen was near the very bottom. And she got far more votes than him. And a lot of people have speculated, since they were both new candidates running for council, that that could have been part of it. But of course, we don't know for sure.
Yeah, you know, it's, this is the tricky thing about making anything out of just one election, right? Because I noticed the same thing. It definitely seems to suggest that there's something about ballot order going on. And then you look at COPE, and it's the opposite. I mean, the, the top name on the list for COPE received fewer votes than the bottom name on the list for COPE, Roberts and O'Keefe. And then Swanson was in the middle, but, so it's complicated, right? And if the city of Vancouver did decide to stick with this system for two or three elections, we'd be in a position where we could really make some, some confident claims about the effect of this system on ballot order advantage. At this point, I think all we can say is that we don't have any evidence that it makes the, the problem better. That's, that's for sure. And if anything, the evidence inclines sort of gently in the direction of suggesting that you are, you're in a better position at the top of the ballot on a randomized ballot than you would be at the top of the ballot on an alphabetical ballot.
Right. And in your analysis, you have found that the best way to get people to vote for who they want to vote for is through information, like letting people know who folks are and what they stand for. And I'm wondering if you think that this year's lower vote turnout, which was 39% versus 44% in the previous civic election, was due to a lack of information?
That's a really good question, and I think it's one we can't answer just yet. But the project that I'm part of, the Canadian Municipal Election Study, is doing survey research in Vancouver, collected data prior to the election, and is currently collecting post-election survey data. So we will be able to say something about who voted in this election and, and a little bit about what motivated them to vote in not too long.
Cool.
It's, it's hard to know at the moment why we saw that slip. It was an open mayoral race, which tends to drive turnout upward. But it was also a complicated mayoral race. The party system, particularly at the mayoral level, was quite unstable. So it, it's possible that that caused some confusion among voters, but more to follow on that.
Right. And I mean, some people are speculating that that was due to the campaign finance restrictions, like there was less money to advertise.
Right, exactly. So, so this is another thing that is, is very interesting and we're going to see as things, as we proceed here in, in Vancouver, if the, if this really was a coincidence that we saw this strange, unstable party system this year, or if this is a kind of new era on account, in part on account of the campaign finance rules.
Right.
Though it is the case that, I mean, let's not forget that MPA, which has traditionally done quite well, going back a lot of years, under the old campaign finance rules, did very well under this new campaign finance rules as well, right? So it's not as though this was catastrophic for some of the older, well-established parties in the city, but we'll see.
Yeah, totally. I mean, I think my observation on that is that it shows how deeply rooted the MPA is and how, even though these campaign finance rules are attempting to level the playing field in terms of how much money parties and candidates have to advertise and get the word out about their campaigns, when you've been around since 1937, your name recognition can't be, like, it can't even the playing field. You're, you're known in the city. Anyway.
Yeah, you know, I, I have a, a hunch that we will soon be able to kind of verify using the survey data that, that, that the Canadian Municipal Election Study is collecting. And that is that there is a significant portion of folks in Vancouver who really do identify with the MPA in just the same way that people identify with provincial or federal parties. And they think of themselves as a Liberal or as an NDP. You have these patterns of, of genuine party identification. And so they're making their vote selection on that basis, I think, that that, there, there's real party identification with other parties in Vancouver as well. But, but those parties, especially, you know, Vision Vancouver and, and other more recent parties, Yes Vancouver, they, they just haven't been around as long and don't have the same kind of depth of connection. That's my hunch. But we'll be able to confirm or invalidate that hunch pretty soon.
Yeah, when, when will the results be in from your survey?
Well, we'll be getting the pre-election survey results anytime now, within the next couple of weeks. And the post-election survey is currently in the field. And so that'll be a little bit longer, but probably, I think, a month from now or so.
Great. So, and I just wanted to ask, I'm not sure if you've done any analysis on this, but have you looked into, over time, how many women and people of color have been elected in Vancouver?
No, although it would be, that's, that would be possible using these, using these election results. But no, I haven't, I don't think I have a, a graph or anything on that from Vancouver. I could try and pull it together and send it to you if you'd like.
Um, I imagine that's-
For women, I don't, I don't have anything on visible minorities, unfortunately, but I might be able to do something on gender.
That would be cool. Um, I don't know, that's probably a lot of work for you to do, is it?
I think that, I, well, I'll have to check the dataset, but I think that the gender, let's see, is it already coded? If it's already coded, then it's, then it's very little work.
Right.
Uh, looks like I might be kind of, let me see. Yeah, um, yeah, it looks like I can, I can do something. Let me, let me take a closer look at this and then I'll try and send you something.
Oh, excellent, thanks. Um, yeah, obviously-
It's certainly more than usual in Vancouver this year.
Oh, certainly, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm not sure if there's ever been eight councillors who are women. But there's been a lot of, obviously, critique of the fact that it's an almost entirely white council.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this is, it's, it's, uh, it's an ongoing issue in a lot of Canadian cities. If you look at the city of Mississauga, for example, very diverse city, traditionally not a very diverse council. So this is something that, that goes to questions of who's being recruited and how ambition for office develops in particular, members of the, of the public. And it's a little bit outside of my area of expertise, but it's a really important issue that, that political scientists have started to dig into in the last few years.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's about it. I just, if you have any other takeaways from this election, though, you know, it's only been a few days since it happened, that you want to share, please feel free. Not sure if we didn't go over anything you wanted to talk about.
No, there's nothing, I don't think there's anything you missed. The only thing that I noticed was the, the, the interview with Kennedy Stewart, where he was talking about a ward system and proportional representation, and considering both of those as, as items for discussion moving forward. Thought that was really interesting and definitely connects with some of the work you did in the pre-election period on both of those issues. So you will, those, those are likely to remain salient in Vancouver. And I'll certainly be interested to see how both of those develop in the wake of the BC electoral reform debate and also just this longstanding debate in Vancouver about a possible ward system.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it's, yeah, it'll be very interesting to see, but Kennedy has talked about that, so, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, exciting times. Thank you so much for your time, Jack. I really appreciate it.
My pleasure. Thanks for having me again.
No worries, anytime.
Have a good one.
You too.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
CITR and Timber Concerts present Cloud Nothings with guests Nap Eyes and Lea at the Imperial on Tuesday, November 6, 2018. Tickets available online at www.timberconcerts.com and at record stores all over Vancouver. See you there. The October issue of Discorder is out now. BB kicks off this issue of Discorder with her final editor's note and essay on gratitude and compensation. In this month's issue, Discorder covers the Vancouver municipal election. Check that out and go vote on October 20. There's features on I Am U R, Wrong Wave Number Six, the VIF mentorship program, Super Sick Podcast, and a multimedia art project by Jimena Villasquez. There's also live show reviews of millennial line comedy and poetry, records and readings, Sawdust Collector with Katie Duck, and other gems. There's also additional reviews of albums, new books, and VIF screenings. Special thanks to our advertisers, Blueprint, Timber Concerts, The Rickshaw, The Cinematek, The Vancouver Podcast Festival, Quiet City, Vancouver New Music, Creative BC, The Vancouver Art Book Fair, The Vancouver International Film Festival, and the AMS.
And we're back. You're listening to Democracy Watch on CITR 101.9 FM. I'm Lyndon Wong, and today we will be talking about the election aftermath. You just heard an interview with Jack about ballots and independents. And it also seems like, looking deeper into the city council, that it lacks a lot of representation and diversity compared to the city of Vancouver, which is a pretty diverse and multicultural place. So, yeah, looking into that, I think we heard a lot about how voter turnout hasn't been great this year, and especially during this election, and certainly in terms of minorities. And that kind of translates into a really singular demographic council. And that seems like a continued issue and an issue that kind of continues on throughout of Canada and not just Vancouver.
Mm-hmm, yeah, absolutely. Which is something that our, our next guest might have a little bit to say about as well on this year. I think the, the two issues of sort of diversity on council, which were mentioned in that interview, were, yeah, absolutely, as Lyndon just said, the idea of visible minorities on council, something which Vancouver does not have a fantastic history of achieving. But also the issue of equal gender representation. So you would have heard in the interview, Jack, talking about the possibility of actually graphing the results of what the gender split has been over time in Vancouver City Council. And because Democracy Watch is your hottest, most legitimate news outlet in the entirety of Western Canada, he actually knocked that graph up for us, and it's now actually available online. So if you are interested in looking at how the representation, the gender balance in terms of representation on council has changed over time, Jack Lucas has created a graph that shows the number of female candidates who have been, who've run for council over the years and also who've been elected over the years, which you can check out on Twitter. Jack Lucas is on Twitter at Lucas Jack Lucas. I guess he found the Lucas particularly catchy.
Yeah, got the name twice.
Got the name twice. Yeah, we did, um, I mean, it is interesting to say this year that the council has ended up being predominantly white men, given that we were so close to a lot of firsts, I suppose. There was a lot of hype earlier in the year, in particular, about the possibility of Vancouver electing its first female mayor or its first mayor of color. And we saw in the, in the polling results at the end of the day on Saturday, Shawna Sylvester, who would have been the, the preferred candidate, the people hoping for a lady to, to take out the top position, came in, came in third, distant to the first and second places, but actually received quite a large share of the vote within the city of Vancouver, like made quite an even split of that center-left vote with, with Kennedy Stewart as well. We also, we had a lot of excitement about the possibility of, of Wei Young or of Ken Sim becoming the first mayor to be of a visible minority group. No such luck.
Um, yeah, maybe next election, but, you know, definitely, as said in the interview as well, voter turnout and basically making it open and advertising to different minority groups is a pretty big issue and really needs to be worked on in terms of everything.
Boy, this is true and shit.
Simply because these communities are pretty isolated at the same time compared to the majority of voters during the election. It seems like something that has to be worked on and has been stated over the course of the previous election about getting minorities and getting people who aren't as aware voting and making a difference in terms of their representation.
Yeah, absolutely. And if people are interested in sort of finding out a bit more about how the vote actually works in the city of Vancouver and how different communities are represented, you should check out the Municipal Election Podcast that we had been hard at work making in the lead-up to the election. You have probably heard the ads for it on CITR. It's called Seeking Office, and we do go into detail about why it is that we don't actually have, for example, electoral districts that let specific geographic communities in the city, which have often been where recent immigrants and communities of color are concentrated in Vancouver, why they don't have their actual own designated electoral representative, which might sort of change things a little bit.
Indeed. So we're going to play an interview with Frances Bueller, who is a, we've played a lot of interviews with her, but she's basically a resident expert on municipal politics, covering this election really closely. And she's also a professor at the School of Journalism at UBC. But first, we're just going to play a couple of quick ads, and then we are going to go to that interview, so stay tuned. We're going to be back in just a second. You know what's better than reading a great magazine? Reading a great magazine that also helps you fight poverty. Megaphone Magazine is sold by homeless and low-income vendors on the streets of Vancouver and Victoria. Vendors buy magazines for 75 cents and sell them for $2. It's flexible, low-barrier work for people who may not have access to traditional jobs. Download the Megaphone app to find vendors and buy the magazine even when you don't have change. All right, and we're back after that very brief ad. This is Democracy Watch on CITR 101.9 FM. We're, we're doing some election results. Vancouver's municipal election happened this Saturday, October 20th. So we've been getting results from some of the experts we often consult, including Jack Lucas, University of Calgary political scientist and professor. And we're now going to go to Frances Bueller's take on the election. She was doing live coverage on the CBC's livestream on Facebook. I watched some of that. She really knows her stuff. So let's hear what she thinks about what happened with the so-called year of the independent and how our council turned out to be so white and other, other trends that, that happened as a result of this election. So let's go to that. To start out, this was supposed to be the year of the independent, and not a single independent was elected to council, school board or parks board. What happened in your opinion?
Well, I was kind of predicting this weeks ago. At first, I had started off thinking this was the year of the independent. And then, as it became clear how confusing the ballot was going to be and how many choices people had, it became clear to me that, that people were feeling overwhelmed. And I said, I think that they're going to go back to just voting brands because they can't, you know, they can't make sense out of it all. And that's exactly what happened. It was brands.
Right. And in particular, the MPA did quite well in this election, despite, you know, new limits on how much people can donate to political parties, and despite an influx in independent candidates, and also all these new political parties that popped up. So why do you think the MPA in particular did so well in this election?
Well, the, the, you know, we don't know for sure, but it looks like it's because their voters really voted this slate, whereas people on the left progressive side voted for this kind of, these kind of artisanally curated lists of some, some progressive parties and some independents. And so they kind of spread their votes around and ensured that no one from their choices would get in because, you know, they, they were just not as focused and, and as disciplined in voting a clear slate as the MPA was.
Right. And so that's not so much an issue of left versus right, because there were more parties on the right. It's more people trusting the MPA in particular.
Mm-hmm.
Interesting. In this election, voter turnout was down from 44% in our previous election to 39% in this municipal election. Do you have any thoughts on why that might be?
Well, again, you know, people were predicting this for weeks because so many people were confused by the ballot. I think the fact that Vision was sort of seen as, you know, wounded and limping on- I think the fact that Vision was sort of seen as, you know, wounded and limping off the field also, you know, didn't motivate people to come out because they sort of felt, you know, a lot of people were sort of, were tired of Vision, we want them to go, while it was clear they were going. And so people were a bit less motivated to come out to, you know, sort of throw the bums out, as it were.
Right. So something that really interested me was that in this election, Shauna Sylvester and Kennedy Stewart, both progressive, independent mayoral candidates, were competing quite closely for votes from left-leaning voters. And in this election, their vote splitting almost caused the MPAs' Ken Sim to become mayor. And I'm wondering, from your experience reporting on local politics over the years, why you think politicians in high-stakes situations like this choose to compete with one another and split the vote and potentially lose for their larger ideological beliefs than, say, one of them drop out and endorse the other?
Yeah, I mean, it's a real mix of personality and political calculation and so on. I mean, we see it all the time. Surrey First did the same thing. You know, half of their councillors went to a new party, and that guaranteed that Doug McCallum won, not because there was necessarily a massive populist swing to him, but because the ruling party was split in two. So, you know, people do it because they think, well, maybe the public will come with us, or even if I have to suffer some pain in this election, you know, this will pave the way for new choices in the next election, that's sometimes, you know, the thinking that people have. And sometimes it's just personal stubbornness. You know, when Shauna Sylvester first entered the race in April, she said, well, I'll bow out if there's a better candidate. And then she kind of backtracked on that, said, no, I'm in it for the long haul, and started accusing Kennedy Stewart of being the vote splitter because I was here first. So, you know, so sometimes it's just a personality thing.
Right. And to change directions a bit, do you have any thought on why, in a city where more than half the population identifies as being a visible minority, our new city council is almost entirely white?
Yeah, well, you know what? When we have had minority, well, we shouldn't even say minority, because they now have a majority, but whenever we've had non-white councillors, it's because a big, powerful party with a slate got them on. So, you know, when the NPA was at the top of its game, it would always include one or two Chinese-Canadian candidates. It would often include a South Asian one. Vision Vancouver was very deliberate and, you know, they ran with originally three Chinese-Canadian candidates, and they tried to maintain that. So those big parties can help, you know, get people from, you know, ethnic communities over the line. And also, there is some speculation that all the anti-Chinese chatter in Vancouver might have had an effect, that, you know, some people would avoided voting for Chinese last names because of the resentment over foreign investment and so on.
That's interesting. Also, are you surprised that so many women were elected to council?
A little bit, yeah. You know, it's almost like people picked out the women from various slates and decided to go with them rather than the men. I am a bit surprised by that, and I don't have a good explanation for it.
You mean because there were cases where a party put forward a bunch of candidates and people chose the women versus the men?
Yeah, well, look at the NPA. I mean, it was half women, half men, and only the women got elected, not the men.
That's interesting, yeah. So you've said previously that Vision Vancouver is a strong party with lots of political experience in their ranks, and they were sort of preparing for a strategic defeat in this election. So with only one Vision candidate elected to any of our three bodies of local government, do you see Vision Vancouver as a future force in municipal politics in the city?
Well, I don't know if it'll be called Vision Vancouver, but I do think that the city is always going to be looking for something somewhat centrist. I think voters maybe have shifted a bit left because of the sense of inequity and anger in the city, so they've moved over to the more left-wing parties. But I don't know if that's going to last forever. And, you know, in the past, the history has been that the left, the hard left, could never win an election. The only time sort of left progressives got in is if some sort of more centrist coalition or party emerged, you know, Mike Harcourt, an independent in the eighties, Vision Vancouver in the 2000s.
Great. Last question. Jean Swanson of COPE was elected to city council, and, you know, she ran for mayor in 1988. She was sort of among Harry Rankin's crew back in the eighties. And I'm wondering, is this gonna be something new for the city, having such a strong activist who's engaged in civil disobedience on council? Or, you know, is this something that happened before when COPE had a majority on council?
Well, it didn't happen when COPE had a majority. It did happen when they were perpetually in the minority, and people would elect Harry Rankin over and over again, and even West Siders would throw him a vote, just to have like an opposition voice on council. So actually, she's taking up a role that COPE has had for decades, which is just being like the hard-left voice constantly, you know, sort of raising that perspective on council, not really ever getting too far with it, but being that voice on council.
Right, but was Harry Rankin as, not to overuse the word radical, but as radical as Jean Swanson? In his activism? Yeah, okay.
I mean, you know, he wasn't a poverty advocate, he was a lawyer. And so, and I think he sometimes, you know, had a more realistic view of, you know, or pragmatic view than Jean does. But he was very fiery and used a lot more expletives than Jean ever will. But no, he was a real force on council, constantly sort of bringing up this alternative point-of-view opinion about what the city should be doing. And sometimes he actually was successful, I think, in persuading people on the odd occasion. So no, I mean, Jean's in the tradition of COPE.
Interesting. Well, it'll be, yeah, be fascinating to see what happens. Thank you so much for talking to me, Frances.
Okay, goodbye.
All right, and we're back. That was Frances Bula with her election analysis. So great of her to give us her time. She was doing live election analysis for the CBC. But yeah, she also gave us some of her time, so thank you, Frances.
Thanks, Frances.
Thanks again. So to change the tone slightly, we are about 20 minutes to six, and we thought we would, you know, do some news poetry, because, you know, there's interviews, there's a long-form reporting, you know, we got some other stuff in there, but we just thought, why not, why not have an election poem? So actually, on the weekend during our election night, we were lucky to have Zoe Power, who's in studio with us now, and Miles Black, our music director here at CITR, write a poem for, on the election, that my friend J.C. Gibb, who is a former editor-in-chief of Discorder magazine, and just a good performer, I think. So we gave him the poem to read. He had never read it before. And we have a recording of that for you guys. Zoe, do you want to talk about it before or after? Because you will be talking about it.
I'd just like to say that this will really offer an insight into the quality of political analysis that anyone who didn't make it out to the Lido on the weekend really missed out on. It was, yeah, high-quality, insightful, hard-hitting stuff, as it always is here at Democracy Watch.
Yeah, absolutely. So I mean, really, if you're like wanting election results, sure, we just played some interviews with some pretty smart people. That was good, whatever. This is really, this is really where you're gonna understand what happened.
This is the frontier of political analysis.
Indeed, so...
You had it here fast.
Here we go.
All right, so this is a civic election poem, anonymous, written. The title is, "Did You Say 'Kenn' Is Eight, Or Citizen 'Ken'?" Why is 'Ken' the most powerful name, putting all the non-Kens to shame? Shame starts with S, like Stewart and Sim. Is it the 'Ken' and 'S' combo that's likely to win? Who makes up the electorate? Those with a degree or with a factoid? Who is it who passes the vote? Is it any Kens or a regular? The memory is, it is certain to be that they'll carry the force of the majority. Or is it? This system's a curious thing. But first past the post, who's likely to win? The 'Ken' with the actual most of the votes? Shit, the one time they change it. The 'Ken' with the actual most of the votes? Or the 'Ken' who the least competition evokes? The 'Ken' who favors his morning oats? The 'Ken' who looks best in overcoats? Maybe the 'Ken' who's alone in the night? No, step for rhyme scheme, that isn't right! No 'Ken' should be lonely, it wouldn't be fair. Kens have competitive spirit and flair.